Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for Monday, September 19, 2022. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Member Branstadter. Councilmember Farmer has been excused. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Now, please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving this great country here and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, indivi- individual liberty and that's all.
Well, it's great to see you all tonight. Thank you for coming. We have a few proclamations and presentations to make this evening. The first is a proclamation recognizing September 25th, 2022 through October 1, 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. And for this, I believe we have Dr. Amy Firestein along with Councilmember Branstadter. If you'd both approach the podium, Councilmember Branstadter will present the proclamation. Sounds like we've got a virtual recipient. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Captain Firestein. It's my pleasure to be able to read this proclamation and go forward to do that. You know, the matter of childhood cancer is one that is one that my Lions Club is very engaged with it as it's become, over the near, in the recent years, a focus of Lions Club's international to be able to go and do that. So, City of Lakewood Proclamation. Whereas cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15, according to the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection Report. And this tragic disease is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people annually with an estimated 400,000 children and adolescents diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses their battle with cancer, while those that survive, including many infants, children, and teens, will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancer. And whereas founded nearly 30 years ago by Stephen Firestein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated, Kids Cancer Connection Incorporated, and Lions Club International are dedicated to helping children impacted by cancer in their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patients with psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Seattle Children's Hospital, Mary Bridge Children's Hospital Intercoma, and Madigan Army Medical Center on Joint Base Lewis McCord, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions, family sailing programs, positive appearance services, pet-assisted therapy, Laughter Noon, Laughter is Healing, KCC Supercar Experience, educational program and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby recognizes September 25th, 2022 through October 1, 2022, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week in the City of Lakewood and encourages all residents to learn about childhood cancers and how they can support children with cancer and their families. Reclaim this 19th day of September, 2022. Jason Whalen, Mayor. Doctor, if you would have some comments, we would appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you. So I'd first like to thank the City of Lakewood, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the City Council for supporting Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Children with cancer need a lot of support via their families medically and from the community. Raising awareness about childhood cancer is a large part of this, and that's what we're doing here today. These children have to be brave, strong, and determined, as are their families and loved ones. They have to be to face this battle. Through our work at Kids Cancer Connection, American Cancer Fund for Children, the Lions Club, and in association with the support of government, we are able to further assist these amazing children and their families. So again, thank you for honoring these children and offering your support in the battle against childhood cancer. We can only hope that one day we will no longer need to issue this type of proclamation. So thank you.
Well, thank you for those words and thank you for your work in this area.
We all hope someday that such proclamations will be rendered unnecessary by the advancement in medical breakthroughs and great discoveries to cure childhood cancer. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce. And if I could have the President and CEO, Linda Smith, join me at the podium to receive the proclamation. Well, good evening, Ms. Linda.
Good evening, sir.
Pleasure to see you again.
It's a pleasure.
We had a wonderful time this last week inducting the new members of the board and celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce here in Lakewood. It was a great event. Thank you for the invitation to attend.
And thank you for joining us.
We had a great day. And I'm pleased, on behalf of the council, to present this proclamation. Whereas the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce was established in 1972 by a group of business and civic leaders. And whereas the mission of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce is to promote the community, provide networking opportunities, represent the interests of business through political action, and create a strong local economy. And whereas since its creation, the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce has grown its membership to 400 businesses. Whereas the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce promotes regional prosperity through its military relationships and community connections. And whereas the Lakewood Chamber represents the concerns and needs of its member businesses through market research and promotion and lobbying at the state and local level. And whereas for 50 years, the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce has worked with the surrounding military community, civic organizations, schools, businesses, towns, and cities, as well as Pierce County, to promote economic development and tourism. And whereas the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce and its members provide residents with a robust business environment that increases employment, retail trade, and commerce, and industrial growth in order to make the City of Lakewood a better place to live, work, and play. And whereas the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce encourages the growth of existing industries, services, and commercial firms through training, education, and advocacy. And whereas the Lakewood Chamber is sponsored or participated in many community events and activities, such as Lemonade Day, Summer Fest, Night of Nights, and Night of Lights, parades, holiday events, groundbreakings, and blue ribbon-cutting ceremonies. And whereas 2022 marks the 50th anniversary of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, although not necessarily the 50th anniversary of Linda at the helm of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce. But we are pleased to have you here to receive this. So therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby recognizes the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce for its dedication to serving this community, our businesses, and the residents of Lakewood, and we urge all to join in celebrating these 50 years of accomplishments by our own Lakewood Chamber. Reclaim this 19th day of September, 2022. Jason Whalen, Mayor. And Ms. Linda, the floor is yours. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Well, I'll be brief.
Mayor Whalen.
Deputy Mayor Moss and City Council members, thank you so very much. You know, in these past several years in particular, we've seen it all. We've seen successes, failures, highs and lows, celebrations and crisis, everything. But one thing we never did was give up. This go-getter attitude of ours in our community, our faith in each other, and our commitment towards a business community have brought us where we are right now. We would never have been able to continue this journey without our members and our invaluable partners, that include you, our City Council, as well as this fabulous staff that you have here. So I want to thank you for this recognition. And I'd like to say cheers to 50 more years. Thank you so very much.
Kick me. I did. I did. Great. Next, we have some great presentations with regard to the American Rescue Plan Act sub-receipients, including Diana Sullivan with the Boys and Girls Club of the South Peget Sound and Edison Velez of the Northwest Youth Corps. And for this, I'll call on our Long Range and Strategic Planning Manager Tiffany Spear, who will make the introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you see here, just briefly, there's been a number of these types of presentations to you over the last year, all of the different sub-receipients to date for the ARPA funding. And so tonight, as you mentioned, we will be hearing from Boys and Girls Club representatives as well as Northwest Youth Corps, excuse me. In terms of Boys and Girls Club, there were three major programs that were approved as part of their funding, one of which was termed Teen Late Nights. A second was termed Teen Mental Health First Aid, and a third was Talk Saves Lives. There was roughly $45,000 a year in annual expenses, but this was a multi-year contract. So what I'm going to do now is just step out of the way and let representatives from the organization come up and speak to you. And I'll jump back up once the next person is ready to speak. So I'll get this out of the way.
Thank you so much for the introduction. My name is Diana Sullivan. I'm the Director of Family Support for our clubs and will be speaking about the program tonight for our Lakewood Club. And then this is Sam Zipper. She's our Branch Manager of the Boys and Girls Club of Lakewood. And she will also, so I'm going to let her kick it off just talking about the scope of the project and how things have kind of been moving. And then I'll wrap up at the end.
Thank you so much again for inviting us to share kind of what we do and how we're using this funding to impact our youth throughout the Boys and Girls Clubs. So at the Lakewood Branch, we're serving young people during an after-school and summer program who are disproportionately impacted. These youth and families live in lower opportunity areas of the Lakewood community, and we aim to create equitable programs for providing opportunities and experiences that enable all youth, especially those who need us the most, to be productive, caring, and thriving members of our community. Included in the scope of our project are the events that have already been named, the Teen Late Night, Teen Mental Health First Aid, and Talk Saves Lives, and our daily activities that we offer to our club members that support social emotional well-being of those said members. Our Director, Diana, of Family Services, will share a little bit more about some of that in-depth about those programs. I can talk a little bit about our Teen Late Nights. And what those look like is having teens have a place to come in from 6 to 9 usually on a Friday, twice a month, that we allow them to have that safe community space to be in, right? Things have, how the scope of work has changed since we've gotten this approved funding is it's grown. When we first took this funding with our COVID restrictions, we were only able to have 1 to 9 ratio, so one staff per nine youth. And now we're sitting at 1 to 18 youth, which means that we, in turn, are being able to serve more of those youth. We've moved past, as we're moving through this pandemic, we're having a better chance of hiring youth development staff and staying and creating a longer-lasting impact with those youth. We have this policy that we are a drop-in policy, which means that kids could come and go as they please, rather the registration or however they attend our club. Because of the pandemic and having such, the lower numbers that we were allowed to serve that kind of put a pause on our, how we were running that program. And we're glad to say that we've been able to start implementing that back into what we do, especially with our Teen Late Nights. So as we promote our Teen Late Nights, all of the youth in the City of Lakewood, no matter the registration of the Boys and Girls Club, are allowed to attend those events. And we staff those events, hoping that one day we'll hit 100 teens who come to those programs. So how does, who does this project really benefit? It benefits the City of Lakewood and all of our youth, right? We serve the Lakewood community and students who attend the Clover Park School District. Since we've received this funding, we've served roughly 270 youth and over 100 of those youth being teens. We expect to see that now that the program is growing and some of our restrictions are being lifted without our numbers of who we can serve, that that number continues to grow. So I was giving you a little bit of a number of our 1 to 9 ratio. When we started at the end of 2021, right before we got this funding, we had about 12 teen registers who were actively coming to our after-school program every single day. And now we sit at 35 teen members who are registered and who are showing up to that program. So as we continue to keep making safe choices and continue to grow upon what we're doing and what we're, and obviously the communication in mouth of what our teens are telling their friends and where they're going, that more of those kids are coming and being impacted through our program. And so I'm going to ask Diana to talk about the teen mental health side of everything.
So along with those youth that we're serving, the way we are serving them was built into this funding proposal as well. And so we are, you know, one year into several-year project, and we've already been able to offer a handful of Teen Late Nights. During one of those Teen Late Nights, we were really able to present the Talk Saves Lives, which is a suicide prevention in, presentation to those teens and then also the staff, right? Because they're also a part of our community. And to really hear the, unfortunately, the scary numbers of what mental health is looking like in our communities. And so being able to give them the tools and things to talk about that suicide ideation and hotline numbers to reach out and to know that they have caring adults in their community who are aware and open to talking about the oftentimes full stigma mental health is really important, especially with our teens. So we heard in our teens, I've been to the Youth Council with your youth peers, and they're telling us mental health is something that they want more emphasis on. And so we really heard that and built that into our Teen Late Nights. So again, somewhere safe and healthy for them to attend, but also getting support around those extra needs. We also are working with the school, Clover Park School District, who offer Teen Mental Health First Aid courses. So Mental Health First Aid courses have been around for adults for some time now and help them recognize signs and symptoms of mental health challenges and crisis. And now we have a teen version as well. And I'm working with many partners, communities and schools, the Clover Park School District, and PC2 out of the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department to find ways that we can bring that curriculum into our schools without adding more to our already burdened teachers and curriculum. And so we met actually today and are coming up with some creative ways to, if they're not coming to the club because we're still breaking down some of those barriers, then how can we go to the high schools to also offer that Teen Mental Health First Aid and continue these conversations with them? And so we're, that is part of also lessons learned and changes we're doing in the, from our first kind of draft of this project, is that we are know, we know we need to go where the teens are and give their voice that, lift up their voice. And so we are hearing still that the mental health is key, but they can't all always get to our club. And so that's, our response is going to be, let's go to you. And then in hopes we can learn those barriers, continue to break those barriers down and get them to our club as well. And so that's really how we're going to keep looking at this project, keep doing what we're doing in the club, keep building on that, building our numbers, offering them that safe place, but also go to them out in the community and how can we do what we do, but with a different lens. And so with this funding, that's how we're able to purposely do this, right? Intentionally target getting our teens a safe and fun place to be because they got so left out during the pandemic, being old enough to stay home. And so that's, you know, we're really pleased to be able to focus on that area. And so we just want to thank you so much for investing in our programs and our communities and therefore our kids, because they are our future. Yeah, I was going to say, any questions for us to add?
Well, we certainly may. I want to first thank you both for coming in and giving us such a great overview on the application of the funds and the needs, obviously, that are being addressed in part by the funding. So thank you for that. Any members of council, Councilmember Branstadter, and then Deputy Mayor Moss.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for being here and certainly thank you for your presence and what you do in the community for young people to do that. You mentioned that the Teen Mental Health Program is a newer version of an adult mental health first aid program.
Correct.
But how do they differ?
Yeah, great question. So the Mental Health First Aid for adults started in Australia, came to the U.S. around 2008, in 2012 really got going. And then they got funding through Lady Gaga's Foundation to say, hey, teens go to teens before they go to adults, right? And so how do we help make sure that they're equipped to help their friends? But the key difference is really making sure that the teens then take that information to a caring adult. So as an adult, I may have resources that I can reach out to assist youth, but as a teen, they may not have anybody to kind of pass that on to. And we don't want teens to hold such a burden on their shoulders, although we know they are with their peers. So the difference, real, the key difference is to learn the signs and symptoms of mental health challenges and crisis, but then real big emphasis on getting a caring adult involved to then help you help your friend. And so really, the way it's built is that 10% of the staff of any agency is already trained in the adult portion before we bring the teen one portion in so that they know there's caring adults who know how to respond to these crises. And so that's really the biggest difference is just breaking it down to a teen level on how you can help your peers and real heavy emphasis on getting a caring adult involved as soon as possible.
While you've not been doing it until recently, do you have any anecdotal success stories you could share?
Yeah, so I know, so we've done two, the, there's two of us that are trained locally for Teen Mental Health First Aid in this county. And we've done two successful trainings of youth. And I just the other day heard from one of our teens who goes to Lakewood Club that he actually was asking for more hotline cardum, cards, because he had already given his two away to two friends who were expressing being, struggling with suicide ideation. And so to me, that just gave me chills that not only was he able to get information, but that he's already applied that to at least two friends.
So in the presentations, you mentioned needing to get out to where young people are, that they, they can't show up at the club in droves.
Right.
That, that, and we funded a program a couple of years ago of some young people that came back with a recommendation. And one of that was around transportation and being able to get to places. And they specifically mentioned the Boys and Girls Club and other things. So is a, is a transportation and abilities for young people to get to your facility improved in the past 18 months? Or, and or do you expect that the new Pierce Transit Program of where essentially every middle schooler and high schooler can ride transit for free?
Yeah.
Even though your club is not sitting right on a, on a line?
So I would say that there's a, it's kind of a, it's a mixed answer. So it might not be direct. But is that during the pandemic, we really just did not have the ability to serve teens. We had to shorten how many people were in contact of each other, really offering it for those youth that needed to be on school while parents were at work. And so I think a lot of our barriers honestly falls there, that we lost contact and continually relationships with the teens. And so we're rebuilding that. And again, that's why this funding is so incredible because then we can do it purposefully with intention. And so I think that the transportation in my history there has been a part of that, right? Clover Park High School is considered walking to our club. I don't know about y'all, but it would be a hard walk for me. And yes, the bus system is a little, is accessible now with that new funding and getting free bus passes, but it doesn't mean it's simple for our middle school and high schoolers. But I think that that resource is still fairly new. So as we are exploring what are the barriers, that was something that we were looking at and then found out about those free passes. So I don't know that we have a direct correlation on if that is still a barrier. We're still building that data and finding out.
You know, I know that your physical location is in Lakeview.
Correct.
That Lakeview is one of the areas that this council was particularly looking to target because we had heard that youth in Springbrook, Lakeview, Mata Vista particularly weren't necessarily taking advantage of many of the opportunities that were available to young folks. But how is the demographic of your participants, particularly since you're sort of over on the east side of the city? Are you finding participants from those areas? Or are they coming from more central and west of, in the city?
Lakeview or Tague.
Those are.
Those are, that's a safe question.
Yeah, absolutely. So that Lakeview area and that Tague Park Elementary and like that, that's where the majority of our members come. Currently, with our registered numbers of who are registered for this school year, those two schools are our two biggest feeder schools, feeding us at least 35 to 40 kids a day, especially for our elementary school program. So those two little areas of that. But then also in that direct areas like Harrison Prep and Lockburn, and those are the two middle schools that do bus to us. So that is where most of our middle school students come from. So those areas are who we're seeing the most kids out of is because those are the kids that are having direct transportation to our club locations.
Okay, and I guess, oh, one final question. And although you, we are engaged with supporting this program with, with ARPA dollars and doing that, they are, they are not perpetual. And you mentioned the Health Department was engaged in your work in doing that. But do you have some plans that you have competence in of documenting outcomes that's going to lead you to be competitive for ongoing funding?
Yeah, so, yeah, absolutely. So the Mental Health First, Teen Mental Health First Aid Program has built in pre-.
Yeah, so, yeah, absolutely. So the, um, mental health first, teen mental health first aid program has built in, um, preimpost surveys. And, um, like I mentioned, yeah, working with some health department and state, um, dedicated marijuana account money. Um, we are able to really build, um, a system of how to see if it's working and if it's being built into different, um, different communities. So that's one piece and really navigating that. And then we, um, as an organization, a larger organization that Lakewood is just one clubhouse under. We have seen a lot more funding focused on our social emotional learning and mental health pieces. And so we actually just hired a behavioral health, um, support staff underneath myself. So I am a licensed marriage and family therapist who works for all of our sites and helps, um, those families and the staff and the kiddos. Um, but being able to add staff on there for our large footprint has really been beneficial. And so we will see an increase in being able to impact these same families and these teens with this type of work. But on a larger scale, um, based on different funding that we've gotten. Um, unfortunately, Kristy Garner, our director of operations, wasn't able to make it tonight. She got sick. Um, and she knows more specifics about that kind of budget stuff, but I can speak globally that yes, we have had, um, definitely some great funding that's focusing on bringing in that mental health and social emotional learning piece.
Okay, well, a- again, thank you for not just being here tonight, but being here in the community, uh, on an ongoing basis. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you ladies for being here. That was my question was on transportation. But I'm happy to hear that you have the late night programs going back because the students really need that. So, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for the report. We look forward to receiving even more favorable information about the impacts, the good impacts in the community with the funding. So thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
You bet.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to.
We're going to Northwest Youth Corps next, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
And just providing that patter during the, uh, unfortunate pause.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that. So we do have Mr. Edison Velez this evening from Northwest Youth Corps who will be presenting. And, um, just very quickly for your reference here, you'll see that the scope of work and breakdown of costs that were awarded funds this year and into next are there on your screen for you. But other than that, I'll turn it over to him to walk through this presentation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Edison Velez. My pronouns are kehem. And I'm the Washington State Purpose Manager. Just want to say thank you all for your time this evening. Really grateful to, one, be a recipient of ARPA funds. And two, I feel a little backwards. I'm going to talk a little bit about who we are, um, how this organization came to be, especially here in Pierce County. And then a little bit about what, what we did this summer. So, um, sorry, I didn't get to say hi to y'all before we got the funding, but I'm excited to talk about all the work that we got to do. So Northwest Youth Corps is a nonprofit that is based in Eugene, Oregon, and we service now both Washington State, Idaho, as well as the state of Oregon. Um, we most recently got our start in, uh, Tacoma, Washington about five years ago with our Sound to Summit program. Um, with a focus of creating programming for both youth and young adults, um, inspiring both leadership by using conservation as a method to do that. Um, so, um, you know, right now we have a couple of programs that we do here in Washington State. Um, we have high school programs that allow youth to work either here in their community, such as we got to do here in Lakewood, in the city of Lakewood. Um, but we also have a program with the city of Tacoma. And then we also have camping programs for youth work with the Okanagan National Forest in Central Washington. And then if they stick with it, they can work in our young adult programs, um, that are sponsored by AmeriCorps. So we have this, uh, we have this ladder, these, uh, a continuum of experiences that folks got to do. Um, and so this is a photo of the crew from this past summer, um, for folks, and they got to work at the South Sound Wildlife Area where they did some invasive species removal, got to learn how to use some basic hand tools as well as gas operated tools. And so the way that we fit, fund our programs, um, and the way that this program in particular was modeled, is this was, this is a fee for service program, right? And what all of this funding goes to is it pays for the youth, which I'm probably jumping ahead. Let me double check my slides. Okay. Um, so all these opportunities, they fund, um, both a stipend for the youth to get, an educational stipend, as well as the leaders, um, the vehicle and equipment. Um, and so here locally, the youth got to work, um, with the city of Lakewood Recreation Department on a various, a couple of different recreation projects from fence building, um, to invasive species removal, trail maintenance. And then they got to spend their last week kind of this sound to summit experience, um, with, in this case, they got to go to Mount Bakersfield Quamie National Forest off the four-ten corridor. Um, they got to do this really cool gondola trip at Crystal Mountain where they get to ride the gondola. They worked with a wildlife biologist to do some elk habitat restoration. So they really just got like a lot of outdoor job experience, all within a five-week experience. Um, and then to top it off, if there wasn't enough, after they finish a hard work day, they have to participate in a high school accredited program called CED, which stands for Something Educational Every Day, where they participate in, um, different ologies, where whether it's forest succession, um, plant identification to workplace communications. So, uh, it's a lot of fun. There's a lot to the program. And so, you know, when purchase, when participants go through our program, it's modeled to be an entry-level job. So they're ages fifteen to nineteen, where they learn, again, basic workplace communications and safety. Huge emphasis on OSHA. You imagine giving a kid a swinging tool and they're like, let me get this root out of the ground. And you're like, uh, you don't have to swing that ax that high. Uh, the loppers will do just fine. And so, and you know, also when you use gas operated tools, like hearing is precious. And so for folks that young to understand, or some folks who've grown up with like, oh, my dad let me use the chainsaw. That's great. You're not old enough really, but you know, there's a lot of things that you have to learn with different tools and equipment, especially in, um, land management and recreation. And so like I mentioned earlier, we have a continuum of experiences that we do, whether it's state, federal, as well as county. Um, and then like I mentioned, the members themselves earn a, a stipend across the five weeks of take-home pay of one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars per member. And then the leaders themselves who are going through an AmeriCorps term of service receive about twenty-six hundred dollars a month. Um, and so our request at the beginning of the, the, the year was thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, which funds mostly, the stipends that go to the members, to their leaders, their vehicles, equipment, insurance. And then I'd just like to note that, you know, all of this comes in with, um, NYC, excuse me, Northwest Youth Corps applying for AmeriCorps federal grants, as well as requesting our philanthropic dollars. And so we've had the Dawkins Charitable Trust fund Northwest Youth Corps over the last five years to help get this program expand. This is the first year we've run two, two crews at once here in Pierce County. Simultaneously, while this crew was going on, they had peers working with Pierce County Parks and Metro Parks Tacoma, um, which they got to combine together to do education lessons. And so they were just, um, you know, it's really exciting to have that many teenagers work as, working on, um, outdoor education. So some project accomplishments real quick, um, is that there's over one thousand three hundred ninety total project hours. That's the hours that the youth do in their work. Two hundred eighteen education hours. Um, we were able, we had a, a max of ten. We were able to have nine high school students. They built a one point three miles of fence, two miles of trails maintained, about a quarter acre of invasives, which if you've removed Scotch Room, you would know. It's very difficult. And they got to go camping. So here they are up at Mount Murnier, setting up tents. Um, another partnership we have is REI who, um, donated funds for tents, new tents this year. And in partnership with the Forest Service, they had lots of outdoor recreationally led hikes and lots of them at the, the fire lookout. Um, and so anyways, that's a lot. So I, I, Tiffany gave me bonus information. Y'all like to ask questions. I'd like to open it up to questions.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much. Questions of the panel? Mr. Bran Stetter?
Yes, thank you for, uh, being here and explaining about the program and how it's working in Lakewood. To be able to go and do that. Lakewood is one community and you have nine members, but what, what's the breadth of, of participation in the state?
Um, in this case, when we ran the city of Lakewood crew, it's just closed geographically just to, um, Pierce County. And so when we do like the high school program, uh, the camping program, we can have folks from any part of the state. Um, but because this is a day program, folks geographically have to live within what I would call commuter distance.
And what's the difference between a member and a leader and how does a member become a leader eventually?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so members generally are, you know, in this case, there are high school students between the ages of fifteen and nineteen. And because of the various levels of experience that you need to lead a member of your own peers, or even if you were a crew leader. You know, there's the risk management, the safety, the wilderness first aid aspect, um, the, the leadership development, the youth development, all these different things. Um, you know, we put our leaders through, we do background checks. We put them through a two-week field training where they learn a spectrum of risk management to the youth development. And so, you know, leaders can jump in at any point in their professional career or just continuum of experiences. But I think a member, as long as they can do, you know, one or two of these five books, five-week sessions. Um, and they come back to Northwest Youth Corps at the age of at least twenty or twenty-one, then they could eventually become a career, uh, a leader. Um, but we also offer other opportunities for them to practice their leadership. So for example, we have this backcountry leadership program or for, uh, in twenty twenty-one, we partnered with Mount Murnier. And we had youth work on the Wonder Lynch Rail for five weeks. And that was a really great opportunity for them to practice their leadership there. And I've had youth like that come back and become leaders. So it takes a little bit of time, um, but it's the investment we make.
And in, in your presentation, there was a notation about daily lessons for high school credits. And then it said under leadership development or, uh, environmental sciences. How does that work and how well is that working with the high schools in Lakewood?
Yeah, so the way it works is Northwest Youth Corps, we already didn't do enough. We also have a, a charter school at the, at the home office in Eugene called Twin Rivers Charter School. And so in two thousand seven, we direct, we developed a curriculum, um, that's accredited by Oregon State Standards for at least a quarter science credit, um, half a PE credit and, um, a credit for continuing education. And so when students complete the program, they're able to use our recruitment office to request, uh, it's a, I'm blanking on the word, but it's, they can get a letter that says they completed the program and their guidance counselor can then issue them the credits as needed. Um, and they also have their handbook that they participate in for daily questions and lessons that they do.
So let me think what I heard, that, 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 that the, the credits are awarded by a charter school that you have in a, in a, in a main bridge with, and the student can request to transfer them to their high school, um, and then in education and knowing transferring of credits is just not always automatic. And, uh, is sometimes, uh, subject to rules of where you're trying to transfer them to. Do, do you anecdotally know if that's working in, in Lakewood?
Not in Lakewood exactly. This is the first year we run the Lakewood Crew. Um, so I will kind of waiting for the kids to start making the requests since the school year just started. Um, but in Tacoma, students have requested the, um, a letter from Northwest Youth Corps. And they've been able to get credits there, their high school counselor. Um, so it works, but I agree, it does take an extra step for them to have to advocate and ask for their high school counselor to award the credit.
Okay, this is, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? My only last question for you is how many other cities in Pierce County similarly invested ARPA funds like Lakewood did?
Ooh, um, that I don't know, mostly because the way that we funded the program is through project dollars. And so, for example, like Pierce County Parks has been working on developing trails in Bresman Forest, um, just like on the Cuspus Beanaway. And so they're investing their project dollars to hire the high school students um, to help pay for an aspect of the program. And then Metro Parks Tacoma also pays out of their own, um, annual budget to fund the program each year. Um, so that's kind of our goal for growth, right, is to have, uh, different parks departments invest in hiring high school students.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the information and certainly the, the great work with the kids here in Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the proclamation and presentation portion of this evening's agenda. We now turn to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment at this time. Comments may be sent in advance by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, our city clerk. At her address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us, or certainly by mail at the city's address, six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically. And I'll ask the clerk to read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received no written comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Members of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter pertaining to city business under this public comment period. We ask that the comments be limited to three minutes per person. Currently, virtual comments are accepted. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, you will need to join the Zoom meeting. Uh, as an attendee, by dialing the telephone number reflected on the screen and or entering the meeting ID number presented, please press the star nine to use the raise the hand feature. So I will first call on those who have, uh, appeared to speak during the public comment period by Zoom or on the phone with the assistance of our city clerk. And then we will turn to those who are here in person. We kind of do it back and forth each time. So everyone gets a chance to wait a little bit in their respective, uh, area. So those who have signed in on Zoom or over the phone are those listed. And it looks like the first person is Mr. Dennis Haugen. Do we have sound? I'm going to move to the next one. And if Mr. Haugen comes back, we can certainly entertain his public comment. Uh, I believe Ms. Schumacher, the next one is Ato Equitas. Councilmember Farmer is dialing in. So I take, she's not an attendee during public comment. She's, she's dialing in tonight virtually.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Interesting. I didn't even raise my hand yet.
Oh, I apologize, sir, if you didn't.
No, hey, you know what? I was getting there, so might as well just do it now. Well, sorry I couldn't be there tonight. Oh, and by the way, my name's Ato Equitas. I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. I live in Lakewood. Sorry, like I said, you caught me off guard a little bit. Um, so, uh, we attended the tree ceremony. Or, um, I'm sorry, the, uh, the tree discussion, um, a few weeks back. I hope that the discussion was taken seriously. Um, I'm not sure if there's been any word since then. Unfortunately, we've been very busy. Um, I'm sure that Bunchy will be bringing up some of the things that he's been working on. Me personally, um, I've been helping out a lot on the, uh, community protection side and, um, houseless, um, all things that I've discussed before. But I'm here to talk about trees. So we have, uh, seen all of the data that's out there. A lot of it has gone unreported, um, as Christina Manetti has brought up multiple times. A lot of it has gone unreported, as Christina Manetti has brought up multiple times that some very interesting data that shows exactly why none of this should be happening is being left out of these reports that you guys are seeing. Now, given that these are the reports that I would assume are being given to you, makes me think that you're not the ones leaving them out. So, good for you. But I also hope that hearing some of the data at that meeting and hearing the data that Christina has been giving you over the last few months is starting to show you that this has been wildly skewed to put profit over the environment, to put profit over the community, put profit over the neighborhoods, put profit over health, and put profit over people. I have a feeling that some of the members on the board sitting there have that face that they normally have when I'm actually standing in front of you, and you're not listening right now. I'm hoping that enough of you are to where you're thinking that this isn't quite right. And maybe we should start listening to the people, because there were a lot of people in the room that day. And I didn't hear anybody in favor. Justice for Said Joaquin, all power to the people.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Dennis Haugen here from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I want to mention a little bit about CRT, Critical Race Theory. At the heart of it, starting out with a first grader or second grader or whatever, first thing you tell them that the purpose of an education, if it is an education, teaching the three Rs, and you all know what that means, then that's your way out of poverty to a higher level or just to a higher level. But if you tell a child that there's no use for you, there's no use trying because you're not going to make it because the cards are stacked against you, you're not going to get a child that's going to study because he has difficulty then establishing goals. Now, once CRT, and it's very strong in your community, and the belief of CRT, especially in schools, then what happens? Well, you end up getting an incompetent electorate oftentimes. And our forefathers felt that education and information was necessary in order to make a democracy work. So you can see evidence of CRT, though, at all levels, K through twelve and even up through PhDs and attorneys. There was most infamous attorney who just two and a half years ago, when a riot started, called it "The Summer of Love." And another elected official, when they asked him if a riot was going on, said, "They haven't called me yet." Well, this is what you call incompetence, incompetence, going all the way up to the top of the education system. Then today, it's all part of your problems that you're suffering because without math, you have anticipating, have trouble anticipating consequences. And that's what happened when you voted to be a sanctuary state. Now you've got real problems because withholding protection in a part of a city has brought all kinds of lawsuits and it's brought most terrible reputation for the whole Puget Sound. All of you suffer from incompetence by supposed elected officials in your system. Thank you.
Thank you. That appears to be the last person on the virtual roster wishing to address the council during the public comment period. Am I correct, Ms. Schumacher?
That is correct. We have no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. We'll now turn to those who have signed in to address the council during the public comment period. The first is Michelle Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the rest of the council. Appreciate having the opportunity to speak here for just a moment. I'm Michelle Douglas, and I'm the CEO at Emergency Food Network, and we are located here in Lakewood. We've been your neighbors for a long time. And I just want to start with gratitude for the long, long-term support that you all have shown for Emergency Food Network and the General Fund. I wanted to come after the study session last week and just let you know how grateful we are and excited that food and housing are the priorities of the next RFP for ARPA funding. When we think about the crises facing our community, what we know is that food and housing are the core and the most essential elements. Without those two things, people can't survive, nonetheless thrive. So we're grateful to see that 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 is one of the projects that you're going to be supporting with your funding. We are hoping to build a twenty-two thousand square foot warehouse in Lakewood on our current campus, and that would increase the Emergency Food Network footprint by about forty percent. In case you don't know what we do, we provide a lot of support here in Lakewood as kind of our first through our home delivery program and then the food pantries that we support. EFN acts as the distribution center, and we provide food to seventy-five food pantries across the county, many of whom are located here. But we also act as, and I'm sure you all have looked at your emergency planning documents recently, since we've all just suffered through a pandemic. And what you may not know is that EFN is the number one agency that's listed in the response to any kind of emergency. So I think that that's going to be a real benefit for Lakewood to have that response service located right here in the in the middle of your city. We've been really fortunate to form long-term relationships with council, with different agencies here providing services like Nourish Food Pantry, and also with, you've probably been to it, to the annual Fallen Officers Food Drive, just all kinds of embedded support here in Lakewood. We'd be delighted to show you our location if you would like to see it. But again, I just want to let you know how much we appreciate the support of Emergency Food. One in nine people currently in our county is hungry. So that's, you know, that's, if you think of the statistics here, it's impactful for everyone that sits here at the table. And when we think about programming, we know that kids can't really thrive without access to food and their parent, oh, sorry.
No, you're good. You got thirty seconds.
Oh, okay, thank you. And their parents can't work. So we hope that you'll continue to support Emergency Food. We're excited to share our project. If it's appropriate, I do have folders. I didn't know if you were allowed.
Yeah, Brianna, we'll hand them up. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for coming. Next, Connie, why, please?
Thank you, Mayor Wayland. Hello, city. My name is Connie Behe. I'm Deputy Director of Public Services for Pierce County Library System. And I'm just going to use the public comment period to give you a brief update, although I know that John and our director Gretchen Caserati are in close contact almost daily. I'm here to let you and the public know that we are putting, have been putting tarps on the area of the roof that is compromised in hopes that we make it just a little bit longer throughout the fall and winter so that we can receive the recommendation from the Community Action Committee to our library board. It's the joint committee that we have put together with both of our support. And we're doing all of this in coordination with the city to best understand the requirements and guidelines for anything that we do. We're also putting up fencing or plan to put up fencing, again, with the understanding what the city needs as far as buildings that will be unoccupied goes for safety and security of the building. And we do have, won't be completely unoccupied. We do have staff who are in their daily custodial staff and others who are making sure this, everything is up and running and sorry, everything is up and running and the building continues to work. Let's see, the next thing I wanted to let you know is that we have given you, and your staff has printed it out very quickly, gave to them in the late hours of the workday, a timeline with the events related to closure, as well as the library timeline of our relationship with the Lakewood Library and the city through the work. So if you don't have that, I see you have it in front of you. I also wanted to let you know that we have been working with the city and other partners to create a robust outreach program into the community. We have the first three months planned, and I left some Lakewood events information for you out at the table. I can hand it to you as well. We have pop-up libraries that will be happening, or times that will be happening in the city, the council chambers, as well as ongoing storytimes, programming for adults, and a variety of different things with places like the Historic Society and the Technical College. And, let's see, that's actually, that's all that I wanted to share with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Connie, for coming tonight. We appreciate it. We look forward to the continuing updates on new locations and all things progress. So thank you. Next, Casey Crook.
My name is Casey. I was born and raised here in Lakewood. Since the sudden closing of our Lakewood Library, I've been going to the monthly Pierce County Library System Board meetings. I am here to share with my neighbors and city leaders what I have observed. The Pierce County Library System has yet to own their shortcomings and mistakes in managing the proper care of our historic Tensler Building. They have yet to take responsibility for their ultimate and very costly failure in acting as effective caretakers. In response to increasing public pressure, they have offered only generic, superficial reports of inadequate property management, while strategically shifting focus away from their own long-term performance history as it pertains to Lakewood. At PCLS Board meetings, I've heard a lot of scripted lip service and excuses which very blatantly form an official narrative crafted for public consumption, including the lame duck reasoning behind the concealing, behind concealing the dire state of the Tensler Building and failing to communicate appropriately with city officials and patrons alike. According to the board, they did not want to cause a panic. Apparently, they were merely protecting us all from the big feelings of potentially losing our historic library due to their ineptitude. Apparently, they did not want to cause a panic among employees who would be losing their current jobs and livelihoods. Of course, this is all one big shameful cliche of bureaucratic BS. I don't do the personal attack thing or the slander thing. I don't get wrapped up in these energy dynamics. I do not think them wise or fruitful. However, I do do the peaceably speaking truth to power thing, and I will give frank, honest testimony, even if it is a sad and embarrassing reflection of the lack of integrity others choose to enable and perpetuate. As we get further along into the matter of the pending fate of our beloved historic Lakewood Library Tensler Building, and of how Lakewood will once again put books into the hands and imagination of its people, I hope to witness genuine professional accountability from the Pierce County Library System. I hope to see a much higher standard of professional ethics and good business practice with the city of Lakewood. After all, I don't see why the Pierce County Library System has not acted to this basic degree of professional character and responsibility already. What is so hard about simply saying, "Hey, friends, we dropped the ball. We neglected to properly care for your city library building and its property, and these are the costly consequences. We're sorry. Please consider allowing us a chance to take responsibility for that." What, what is so hard about that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tamara Cook.
I want to talk about liberty and license. Can you have one without the other? And then I want to talk about how we're using our devices, the agreements that we're using on our devices. We're being asked to sign these agreements, which are out of the, they're they're not within the realm of a of a layman to understand. All right, so first of all, I want a landline with my privacy back. Next, I want a newspaper that I can rely on. I don't use internet no more because I won't check that little box of all that garbage I don't understand. I started in DOS. We had lots of language out in the Hamford that I had to work on. This system is not good. Also, I had to suit up every day out at Hamford and nuclear plants, and when I worked in hazardous radioactive waste. Next COVID or next whatever, I want to see you guys suit up so that you respect my rights and I can still have a government. I had to do it. I think you ought to be ashamed of yourself. You dropped the ball. So you're saying to me, anybody that checks that box, if you're, if you're one of those people that says, "Sure, I have faith. I want you." You're saying, "I'll support you." But you're saying that lady that reads the agreements, we're not going to support you. Those people that dig coal or that work on the dangerous jobs for chemical companies, the people, the higher education workers that actually take the time out of their lives to read these things, you're saying, "We don't care about you. We, we're worrying about ourselves." I'm angry at you people. I've been disenfranchised. I've been, I get letters all the time on my, on my door saying, "We want you to spend, send your rent to us now." I get, I get letters that, that say, that have no license on them that I can't look up and say, they say, "We want, we're your new credit card company." Who are you? Does Lakewood stand up for me? Is there a brick and mortar place I can go to to look up this company that says they're my new credit company? Card company? No. This system is really, it's failing us. Please help me. I'm done.
Thank you. Next, James Dunlop.
My name is James Dunlop, and I'm a Lakewood resident. I wanted to talk tonight about the role of the city council. Oh, I mean, the city council has a number of roles. I think one role is that of protecting the community. Now, that role of protecting the community is going to have a political element. You're going to be elected on a particular platform. And so you might feel that the community needs to be protected from one thing, but other people might disagree with you. For example, in two thousand and eighteen, the city council voted not to allow, not to allow marijuana business in in the city because you believe that the city needed to be protected against, against this business and all that came with it. I'm not, it's not a question of right or wrong. That was your, that was your platform. But there are other, there are other things you should be protecting this city from, which I don't really think you're doing enough. And I think that there's a sense of powerlessness I get listening, listening to you sometimes. You see a problem, but you see there's nothing we can do about it. Or, you know, their forces are so great that, you know, we, there's nothing we can do. I mean, in terms of development, currently Pierce County have asked that the city how, you know, provide extra housing for twenty thousand people. And so when you talk about protecting the environment, you've also got to consider that twenty thousand houses, extra houses have to be built. Or you've got Pierce County Library System. Clearly, the city needs to be protected from Pierce County Library System after its dismal performance since the nineties. The only way to protect the city from the Pierce County Library The only way to protect the city from the Pierce County Library System is to de-annex. There is, you know, as we know, the Pierce County Library System is known to be one of the most unaccountable bodies in Pierce County. You, as a city, have got sufficient leverage to get, to get us out of the Pierce County Library System. So you can do something about it. Development, yes, these 20, maybe these 20,000 houses have to be built. But it seems to me that you just let the developers do whatever they want. And you don't seem to put any input. It's not about not allowing development. That's not really what I'm saying. You need to say what development is best for Lakewood. What lake, what kind of development can protect the environment but can also provide affordable housing? I think in general, you need to be more interactive. You need to think more, and I think you need to understand that protecting the community is what you're elected for.
Next, Christina Menetti.
Hello, Christina Menetti, Gary Oak Coalition Lakewood. We hope we can hear more about the de-annexation process soon. I know that Mr. Caulfield or somebody else has asked for information, and we'd like to hear about that too soon. I'd just like to make some comments in the wake of the public hearing about the tree code amendments. I was always afraid from the beginning that the city would just try to make the minimum kind of superficial changes, you know, so that nothing gets shaken up too much. And I'm afraid as soon as I walked out of that meeting, that was a little bit confirmed. I heard right away that those people in there don't know, it's Pierce County, it's Pierce County that's forcing us to have all these extra people here. We have to build, we can't. Then I heard, it's impossible. It can't be done. You know, that we can't have tree protections and build the houses, and that it's too expensive. So the city finds all kinds of money for other things. For example, $800 for face painting at Summerfest. They got a grant for, you know, ripping, ripping out the trees to put the sidewalks on Phillips Road. And it makes me wonder, like, why don't we have money for tree protections? It's because people haven't looked for it. I mean, it's there. There are grants for, you know, other things. And it's not acceptable to say that, that, that there's no money for it. It's too important. It's like saying there's no money for other critical aspects of city life, like streets, potholes, traffic lights. Trees need to be seen as critical to the well-being of the city and its people. The problem has to be tackled professionally and not through some symbolic consultant's report, and not by, for example, students doing a senior project at university. Look, please, for example, at the city of Seattle's Urban Forestry Commission Board members, I mean, not board members, commission members. You see that they have Position One Wildlife Biologist, Urban Ecologist, Natural Resource Agency, Hydrologist, NGO, there's a Realtor, there's Get Engaged With His Youth, Environmental Justice, Public Health and Community and Neighborhood Physician. So you can see there are actual experts. I mean, this woman who's the wildlife biologist, she's actually a specialist in Gary Oaks. Imagine that. So you need to find people who are, actually know what they're doing, and they don't just do little internet searches and then say, oh, we should grow Tupelo, you know, trees in Washington or actually in Lakewood, or research like the, the Master Builders Association who says, oh, look at, you know, city trees live only 28 years. When Gary Oaks can live 500 or more. So I'd like you to, you know, give some serious thought to these matters. Consider trees as critically important to our well-being. We don't want to be like Tacoma with no trees. And we don't need trees just in Fort Stilton Park. We need them everywhere. So, thank you.
That is the last individual signed up to address the council during the public comment period. However, that doesn't stop folks who would like to still address the council if you're here and you haven't had a chance to, to speak. You're certainly welcome to. So if there's anyone else who'd like to address the council during the public comment period who is here physically, the time is now. Seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda for tonight's program. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of September 6, 2022. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of September 12, 2022. C, motion number 2022-69, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement for the JBLM North Access Improvement Phase One Project. D, motion number 2022-70, reappointing Jason Gerwin and appointing Anessa McLendon to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through September 19, 2025. E, motion number 2022-71, appointing Violet Johnson to serve on the youth council for the 2022 through 2023 school year. F, motion number 2022-72, appointing Cameri Wilson to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Committee through August 6, 2025. G, motion number 2022-73, removing Philip Rashke from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda which a member requests being removed at this time? If not, I'll, I'm open for a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Ma, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 774, amending ordinance number 695 and ordinance 696 regarding the schedule for periodic reviews of the 2018 Downtown Subarea Plan Development Code located at Lakewood Municipal Code Title 18B and Plan to Action.
Thank you very much. For this, we have our long-range and strategic planning manager, Ms. Spear, to give us an overview on this proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So just to summarize quickly what's happened to date. This was the second year for a biennial review of the Downtown Subarea Plan, its development code, and the related SEPA Plan to Action ordinance. The Planning Commission provided a recommendation to you via resolution to change the frequency of future reviews, but no other substantive changes to the package this year. They did look at the following items as part of their review. Transportation, park and open space, the sale of the Lakewood Town Center, contaminated property updates, private project updates, transportation mitigation fee status, and then suggested next steps. The city council itself has held a study session on August 22nd, and then there was a public hearing on September 9th. And then included in your packet this evening is draft ordinance 77, I'm sorry, 774, which, if adopted as is, would amend the cycle for future reviews within ordinances 695 and 696. The language here is also in your packet, so I won't spend a lot of time here, but this is simply the language for ordinance for 695 and then 696 showing those changes to the review schedule. There were two questions answer, or questions asked by the city council during its study session we wanted to provide some information about. First was related to the transportation mitigation fee calculations for several businesses, Dutch Brothers or Dutch Bros and Barbecue Pete's. A little bit of background there, there's been 33 TMF applications to date overall. Thirty of those 33 have been finalized. The highest was the Barbecue Pete calculation. That'll be explained in just a moment. And then 25 out of those 33 applications received did not repay any TF MF at all based on how the calculation is done. So the Dutch Brothers, long story short, there was an ITE manual, the transportation manual that's used to refer to for the number of trips per type of use, calculated a certain amount. Dutch Brothers, through the process allowed by the city, challenged that and said, given our specific use, these are what the numbers should be in terms of trips per day. And so you'll see the original calculation was for almost $80,000. That was dropped down to $57,600 based on that challenge. Barbecue Pete's was a little different. It was an existing suite which had a previous use that was credited against it. However, with the calculation, you still had a number of uses, or a number of trips per day. And so the result was the size of the building and the number of trips per day multiplied by that fee per trip to get that final number. The other thing that was included in part in your materials for tonight was a status update per the implementation table for the downtown plan. Some of this information was with the packet to you. However, some of it's been updated since. I will provide this to the city clerk to forward on to you tomorrow. But we did break down urban design and land use, economic developments, housing, street grids, scree, screep, scapes, and public spaces, transportation, parks, open space and trails, stormwater, utility infrastructure, and community partnerships. So there's action, action items for each one of those subsection areas, and I will again get this to the city clerk for you tomorrow. But essentially, you'll see on the far right that there are some that are blank, some that have information in them in terms of implementation to date. So with that, I will stop presentation, presentation and turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, to answer any questions or leave it to the council for discussion.
Certainly, Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, I've heard how the numbers are applied to the formula we have. But I haven't heard an adequate explanation to date of why Barbecue Pete's was charged so much. I go to Barbecue Pete's. I go to Dutch Brothers. It takes a casual observer about a minute and a half to realize that one generates hundreds of trips. The other one generates dozens of trips. And I, I can hear the rationalization. I don't want a rationalization. I want to know how you fix it because it isn't fair. First, we have to do what's right, or this whole scheme falls. It will not have support. If you can look at it and so easily see the unfairness in what we've created, we have to fix it. How do we fix it?
Mr. Anderson, this evening, I, my, my response would be to go back and take a look at the ITE manual and look at the types of restaurants that are calculated. Because what was chosen there as a, as a, as that type of restaurant would seem to be overstating the calculation. That's my response this evening.
Hey, Mr. Bokey.
Can you explain what the ITE?
I, I guess, I, I would, Bokey and then Branstadter, yep.
Can you explain what ITE manual is?
It's a transportation engineering manual that the Public Works Department uses on a regular basis to determine the traffic counts. And thus potentially the mitigation for a project. We use it frequently for like SEPA on large commercial projects, for example. There are multiple categories of different types of uses. Oftentimes, there's more categories than makes sense. So you have to try to figure out what is the best fit for that particular use. It's a book about this thick. And we rely upon the engineering department to make that calculation. It's approved by the Public Works and Engineering Director. So in this particular case, my first feeling would be that we used, the city could have used a different restaurant count for Barbecue Pete's. And so we're, I'm more than happy to go back and review that with Public Works Director.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, and Mr. Buhr, I agree with Councilmember Anderson that looking at the table of what was charged to people, the logic is not clearly evident. That I think that there is also the fact that there were many permits that, that the calculations resulted in no charge to be able to go and do that. That also, and in some cases, didn't make a lot of sense in the same way. For instance, the catapult action park like Barbecue Pete's moved into a building quite a bit larger that had been vacant for an extended period of time. And yet, the calculations determined that there would be no increase in transportation trips. And so they, they, they didn't, weren't allocated any transportation fees. So it seems that maybe there is something in our formula or our thinking that says, if something's been vacant for five years, one thing happens, but if it's less than five years, you get credit for what was there before. And I find the logic somewhat fallacious to see that a new business that is expected to be successful is being, getting credit for the number of transportation trips that a business that turned out to be not successful in that location was to be able to do that. So maybe look to see whether the, the formula that we're using is equally applicable to businesses moving into existing structures as well as new structures being built that are creating totally new uses such as occurred with the Dutch Brothers Coffee. But we're not in a window to do that at this biennial review, okay? You said there's things that have to go back and look to be able to go and look at it. So when you have a chance to do that, if you could at least come back to say, do we have to wait until 2024 to fix it, or if you were, would you have a proposal to make adjustments earlier than that? Thank you.
Any other questions? Any further comments or discussion on this action item? I guess my thought as we get into this is, I know there's likely going to be an amendment to look at some different recommendation other than what's before us, and I'll entertain that in a minute, but you know, I, I do think at some point when we do monitor the impact of the downtown code in implementing the plan, that we may need to look and see how well we're incentivizing sort of greenfield development, if you will, you know, brand new folks coming in as opposed to folks taking over older spaces that had previous occupancy and activities, right? I have heard anecdotally from folks who have space in this area in the town center that they are reticent or would be reticent from construction plans of something anew for fear as to how this traffic impact fee might be applied. So I do think it's worthy of some review, and, and I think sooner than later is better. So with that, are there any other questions of Ms. Spear or Mr. Buhr? Otherwise, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 774? So move. Been moved by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt ordinance number 774. Any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, uh, this is the second biennial review of, uh, the downtown plan and a lot of effort in creating, and that we have a lot of hopes for that in time will, 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 will create a, a vision of a vibrant downtown in multiple ways to be able to go and do that, both in terms of housing, economic development, parks and, and, and reparation and being a gathering place for the city. At, at this review, I understand that there is not a lot of substantive change. Basically, the first biennial review, there was not much substantive change because not much happened, and much of what did happen in the first two years were projects that were grandfathered under the previous code. So there wasn't really any data or thing to do to cause us to make significant changes. And as, uh, then for this next two years, largely it fits the period where the data isn't necessarily decipherable as to what it means in the long term because it took place in the, in the window of the pandemic and, and, and of the pandemic and, 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 and the many temporary restrictions and things that went on. But when we adopted the, the plan, we, we built into it having these biennial reviews so that we would be as a body looking at outcomes and looking at trends and that we could make changes in direction before there were critical issues to do that or in a knee jerk manner because somebody came and wanted to do some specific thing. So I am in disagreement with the planning commission's recommendation to change the, both the period and the, and the nature of the, of the reviews of the, of the plan. I think that going to every five years approaches the way that we dealt with the Tillicum Neighborhood Plan where we sort of passed it and things happened in Tillicum, but we didn't necessarily take a look at whether they were happening in accordance with the plan. And we've recently fixed that in this last thing over there where we've refreshed that plan. And I think they have a commitment to do that. But that, you know, the biennial views should be done something that could be where, where, where we look at data and we make data informed decisions, not make decisions because some crisis has evolved that causes us to have to, have, have, have to act to be able to go and do that. So in that respect, I, I, I have, I have an amendment to offer to the ordinance. And I, I would move to amend the ordinance as follows. Under section two, which was adoption of amendments, the ordinance of six ninety-five and six ninety-six. Under the section for ordinance six ninety-five, urban design policies and strategies. And the strategy I would monitor, change that to read, monitor the impact of the downtown code in implementing this plan in 2024 and biennial thereafter. And amend the plan and its associate regulations as needed to improve outcomes. And in the same section within table five, amend the ninth item to read, monitor the impact of the downtown code in implementing this plan in 2024 and biennial thereafter. And amend the plan and its associated regulations as needed to improve outcomes. And under the section for ordinance six ninety-six, under section four, monitoring and review, amend a paragraph A to read, the city should monitor the progress of development in the designated planned action area biennially to ensure that it is consistent with the assumptions of this ordinance and the planned action D I S regarding the type and amount of development and associated impacts with mitigation measures and improvements planned for the planned action area. And amend paragraph B to read, this planned action ordinance shall be reviewed by the CIPA responsible official from its effective date in conjunction with the city's regular comprehensive plan review or docket cycle. With the rest of the paragraph being unchanged. And under that section, under exhibit D, transportation cost estimates, paragraph six amended to read that the planned action share transportation fees will be incorporated into the City of Lakewood's master fee schedule. And fees shall be subject to biennial review to affirm the cost basis.
Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. Do we have a second on the proposed amendment? I'll second it for purpose of discussion.
Wait, order, Chair can't second. You have to pass a gavel, then you can do it.
I'll pass it. Okay, I'll second the proposed amendment. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment to the ordinance? Yes, Mrs. Debbie, Mayor.
I just, for clarification for myself, the planning commission is asking to go five years. And you're trying to get it to two, every two years. So my question is, with between the five, if something comes up between five, before the five years or up, do we not have the ability to address it at that time?
I'll ask Mr. Buhr maybe to address the question. Then, Mr. Branstadter, may we get a clarifying question? And then you can speak to the question as well.
I'll step in for Mr. Buhr, Tiffany Spear. The way that the current ordinance seven seventy-four reads as proposing the change is that it would be at the very least every five years. And then you would also have the ability during the annual comprehensive review plan cycle to drop in any additional changes more time sensitive than a five year cycle. But be that as it may, even if the council were to find right now under the current two year cycle, if there was something that needed to happen faster, you certainly could do that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. My reason for proposing the change and really while it's, I'm making an amendment to the ordinance that's before us, what I'm proposing is that we don't make a change. My amendment goes back to retaining the language that is currently in the subarea plan and the planned action ordinance, which is that there's a biennial review that's driven to take a look at how well is the plan working? And are there adjustments to make to make it plan better? To look at outcomes and it's a data driven process. As Mr. Buhr put in his memo to us today, there is, there exists now and there would exist in the future that if it's in his thing says if urgent time sensitive issues are identified, they can be incorporated within the city's annual comprehensive plan development process. But identifying urgent time sensitive issues is different than over time, looking at a plan and seeing how well is it working? Okay, and looking to see whether there are some adjustments based on feedback that we have. That the I think that you can take a look at how we go about doing that under the, this is at least a thing of where even as we've seen in the last two plans of where there have, it's been kind of odd. Like I mentioned, the first two years, there wasn't much data to, 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 to look at, at, at what was the trend regarding outcomes and how was the plan is working. And in the second two years, it's really kind of unclear because those two years data is all an anomaly based on what is going on with the pandemic and how did it impact? The other thing is right now at this time, one thing the planning commission and I, I guess, agree on is the next review takes place in 2024, which is two years biennially, which is what the, the plan, there would have been one anyway. I see no point in adding then to say, and after that it'll be every five years. Now, if we decide in 2024 that we don't need to review it for five more years, we can do that then. But we'll have hopefully two more normal years of data to be able to look at. We'll have, be able to get feedback and not feedback that is critical, time sensitive with relation to specific projects, but being able to look as to how well the whole subarea plan is working. And I think that going to a five year cycle and, and, and combining it into the comprehensive plan docket system gets us away from that. You know, we, as, as a council, don't ever really have very much discussions about the comprehensive plan things to do that. And you kind of got to know what you want to change upfront before you even start the process, which is very different than the biennial review that I think was envisioned when we adopted this plan as, and similarly for the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. And hopefully that we're going to use for the Tillicum Area Plan going forward after we refreshed that this past year. So I'm saying the rush to a five year cycle, now we don't need to do it now. Okay, that we're going to review it in, in, in two years. And maybe in two years we'll have a, a much better review to be able to look at things and how they're working and being able to go and do that. And actually, I would hope that we as a council would have some discussions along the way. You know, we have talked a little bit about development incentives and things like that and that we really ought to have some discussions about that. And somehow we never really get around to having in-depth discussions about how, how, how are we doing that? We do, all of our discussions are, this project is here right now and what's the impact? And we should keep the review of the subarea plan apart from that process as it was written. And so my amendment is merely to retain the plan as written, not amended as the proposed ordinance seeks to do.
Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? I'm going to speak in favor of the amendment. I think that Mr. Branstadter is correct that our initial intent was to have a two year biennial review. And I think as I recall back in part, it was to put some intentionality into an area of the city and its development that was very near and dear to us from a matter of policy. We wanted to see something happen sooner than later in the town center, in the central business district. Since 2018, we're coming up on the fourth year since we passed it in October of 2018. And I for one am not convinced that we've seen fruits of our collective labors as much as we had hoped. And so I think an intentional two year or biennial review going back to what we contemplated to me makes some sense. So, you know, at least until we see some significant growth in the implementation of the plan through hopefully the private development community. I, I think more often intentional review is warranted than less often. The other thing is in a five year review after 2024, it punts it to a whole potentially different council. And we lose that opportunity to have our stamp on it potentially, whoever's here in the two year cycle. So I'm in favor of the motion. Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question regarding, you talked about the data. I really don't feel like two years is enough time to get substantial data that can be comparable where we could make some sort of decisions on. So that is my concern with that window. It just does not seem like enough time. And maybe if the five years is too long, maybe that's the part that's get shortened. But I, I just don't, as far as collecting data, I don't think that that's an appropriate amount of time where you can get comparable data that is going to show significant changes with these long-term goals that we're looking for.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, yeah. I agree, two, two years of data in isolation may not be real, real, real valuable. But that but it does help you to see, see trends. And if a plan is going to come to fruition of, of, of as long-term a plan as this, you want to be able to at least say that the trends are moving in the direction that you, that you want. And I do think in the first four years, the trends are unclear because of the pandemic, because most of the development in the first two years was done under the old code. You know, there were, there, there were housing units built and things like that, but they were built, you know, because they were grandfathered in to be able to go and do that. And so that momentum builds slowly, but you need, but two years is enough to recognize that there is okay, and that it's momentum in the direction that you want. It may not be enough data to say, and we need to make this change, but it's, it, it puts your eye on it. And that was part of the thoughts that went into why the two years was chosen back when we did it. And there is, whether coincidence or not, our other subarea plan has a very same biennial review, review process. And it is done in the opposite years from the review of this plan so that we can actually focus specifically on one time on this plan and one time on, on the other and to get to see where we're going. Now, once we have enough data and enough sequential data to see that the plan is moving in the direction that we want it to and we've been able to make some tweaks, then perhaps considering a longer period between reviews is appropriate. But until the data shows you something, you know, right now we've got four years of data that are really skeptical as to their value because of the way of the times that, 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 that went on. I'm hoping that the next two years of data is a more normal in terms of what the long-term economic development patterns are going to be and, and, and see where they're going. And maybe at the end of two, two years from now, that there'll be something to look at, 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 at two or four and tie it to the comprehensive plan docket cycle for any, you almost have to know before you look at it what the change you, you want to do to be, that's how those, those, those things work.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the amendment to the proposed ordinance signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The proposed amendment fails. We now to turn to ordinance number seven, seven, four as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance seven, seven, four as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance seven, seven, four has been adopted. We now turn to unfinished business. Mr. Caulfield.
There is none, Mayor.
How about new business?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Great, so we'll turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. First up, I'd like to introduce our communications manager, Grim, Bryn Grimley, as well as Derek Gibson, who we brought on to be one of our interns. Where's Mr. Gibson? Come on down. I didn't, I didn't recognize him with his baseball cap. And Mr. Gibson was brought on earlier this year to help us with our website. And he's done a fantastic job in improving the flow and read of it as well as improving accessibility to include the ability for it to be easily or more easily translated. So with that, he would like to provide you an update on the work that he has done. But I think Ms. Grimley would like to provide an introduction. Ms. Grimley would like to provide an introduction as well.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Um, the city manager sort of stole my thunder because he effectively said what I was just about to say. Um, I'm here this evening to introduce to you all, uh, Derek Gibson, who was hired earlier this year through, um, ARPA allocations to make, uh, accessibility improvements to our website and also just overall, um, flow improvements to make it easier for members of the public who are coming to our site, find what they're looking for, as well as make our site more accessible for translation services. So if folks are using our translation service on our site, there will be a better correlation between what they're reading and the actual translation. So, um, Derek's gonna provide you all with an overview of the work he did. And then if you have any questions following up, we'll be here to answer them. So here's Derek.
Mr. Gibson, if you could start, just give us an overview of you.
Oh, um, I just, I just graduated from PLU, um, with a degree in stra- yeah, go LUTE. Um, degree in strategic communications with a triple minor in business, marketing, music and innovation studies. Um, I've been working here and then I also work at a record label as a music licensing specialist, um, just on the side. Um, so do all kinds of stuff. Uh, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to present my findings. I worked really hard on this.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. Um, so like Bryn just said, um, I'm Derek. This is the website, ARPA-funded translation projects. Um, we're gonna go briefly over this. There's just a couple of things that we're gonna go over. First, I'm gonna go over some data terms that are really important for, uh, measurement of data and, um, tracking those communications. Um, and then translation, the navigation and accessibility and design. I'll be going over my goals, um, and my approach and examples for how the success was for each of those things. So first, um, two different data terms that are very important. We have our bounce rate. This is the percentage of people who, um, click back immediately upon entering a page. So that means they go on a page, they don't see what they need within a couple of seconds, they click right back. Um, this can be, this can indicate a lot of things. A high bounce rate indicates that they're not finding what they need. A low one indicates that they can find what they need. Um, a consistent bounce rate, which means it's, the graph is flat, which will be an example later. Finding what they need always and in- because inconsistent means they're finding some of the things that they need. Uh, the other measurement, um, is page views. So this is the amount of times that someone enters a page and does not bounce. This is important because a slow, um, increase in page views on a page over time um, implies that people are accessing that page more and they are able to grasp the information and find that information and therefore meet, more people are seeing that page. So starting off with the most important, uh, part of this entire project, the translation. My goal, um, was to improve language on, um, the website to assist Google Translate, which is the service we already have on the Lakewood website. Uh, but I do, I did this by taking all of the content on the website and reducing it down to an eighth to 10th grade level. Most of it was at a post-grad or 14th level or higher, but the lower level that we have was saying the same thing, the better opportunity Google Translate has to, um, translate it and be more accessible. So we did that and then we also got rid of, um, all words on, uh, we made sure that all words on the we- website were translatable. So that means replacing any photos that have text in the image. For example, the pollution prevention assistance right here, that is an image, um, that text will not be able to be translated because, um, WordPress will only see it as a photo. So, an example of what I've done, you can see up top, we have one sentence. Um, it says grade 14 and right below that, it says grade seven. They essentially say the same things, but simply by breaking up that compound sentence, we have given, um, we've dropped grade levels significantly and given Google Translate an opportunity to translate that and be more accessible for anybody going on the website. Um, there will be more results coming in later. Uh, this is a very short period of time that we have here. But just in the short amount of time, we do have some success. Uh, this red dot on this graph is when I made my changes to the website, specifically the human resources page. And as you can see over the course, is a steady gradual incline in page views, which implies that people are finding the page, they're able to access the page and more people are entering that page and not leaving it because they're finding what they need. So next, um, was navigation. That was a really important part of this project. So making and finding, make finding and accessing materials easier. Um, part of this was making circular moving department sites, so nobody ever gets lost. If you enter the police site, you're gonna go to the next page and you can always come back to the original police site. You're not gonna get a bunch of click-through. Um, and then the, one of the biggest problems with our navigation was the mobile friendliness. 60% of Lakewood's residents are on, uh, mobile when they visit our website. So making sure that our website is usable on a cell phone is super important. And then finally, improving site maintenance capabilities by making it easier for city employees and city staff to find the things that they need to on the website. Um, that was a big priority. When I was meeting with department heads, they all wanted to know where their things were and how to find those things the easiest. So a nice balance of city and, um, the resident side. And so my approach to, to this was using analytics to find the most clicked, most used pages, find those paths of travel, where are people going, and then bring those pages to the forefront. Um, and then using department homepages as landing pages, which I will give you an example of here in a second. So, is there a way to click this? Little link right here. Okay. Um, can you click this? Oh, it's a touchscreen. How fancy. Perfect. Thank you. So just quickly, we're gonna jump over to the police page, hoping that it works.
Getting bounced back.
Perfect. So this is just a quick example of, there we go. So just looking at the police page just here for a couple, um, or a second or here, second or two here, all of these things you see on the top right, the domestic violence report, animal control, tickets and fees. You guys see my, my screen? Not on their screen.
Yeah.
You see it now?
There we go.
Perfect. So when you go on the Lakewood Police Department website, um, you can see our contact information available right off the bat on the left. And on the right is a link bank. And that is going to have, um, I use analytics to find out that those are our most important pages, the ones that people use the most. And so when they enter the police page, those are gonna be right there in the forefront. Um, and that is the same for every department page. Go back to the PowerPoint. Yeah, sorry.
Derek, just a quick question. So could you just scroll up on this page just for a sec so we can see the top header? Looks like we're, there you go. Okay. So in layman's terms, the, the box on the right has a little dropdown menu. So one can either go there and click or to the central larger box to the same menu, if you will.
Um, correct. So that's one thing that's a little confusing. Um, that thing on the right, when I do web pa- webpage edits that on the right, because 60% of our users are mobile on a phone, that drops below, um, everything else on the webpage. So I act as if that does not necessarily exist and, um, so that when people are on their phone, uh, that table you see on the left mid-center.
So the mobile optimization then just goes straight to the main box and that's what we would see on the phone?
Yep, exactly. May I do have to do something to get back to the? Yeah, just right back. We'll go. Okay. So that was my example and this is my, um, results that, my most concrete results, a few other departments have shown this. This is the municipal court bounce rate, um, before and after I did my changes. As you can see, the red dot is where I made my changes beforehand. The bounce rate is all up and down and people are not finding what they need, super inconsistent. And when I made my changes, you can see it flatlines and, um, starts to drop off, uh, pretty significantly. And then finally, the last part of this project was access, the accessibility and design. Um, we wanted to design the website so that look and features navigation are all cohesive, and we wanted to identify which features are the most accessible and replace those, replace the old features with those. So the approach to this was visual cohesiveness between pages. Um, we want viewers to know what to expect going between pages. If a round button does something on one page, we want a round button to do the same thing on the other page so people know what to expect. And finally, I spent a bunch of time designing page templates so that, um, people that work for the city don't have to be making pages from scratch. They can use one of my templates to simply fill the information into what they need and publish that page really easily. Um, making it overall easier and, uh, more accessible for everybody. So these are examples of the accessibility. Um, these are accordion menus on the left on the top, you can, so they do the same thing. They hide information in them. You click them, it drops down. Although they do the same thing, the ones on the bottom are more accessible because they have a drop shadow. So that indicates that it's a button. Um, so really small things like this all over the website really boosts, um, accessibility. And then as I just said, we want everything on the site to be the same. So, um, square buttons are only for internal navigation and round buttons take you out of the site. And there are numerous other examples of these, but, um, these are the ones that I have here. And then finally, example of the templates. So you can see on the left, that is my template. Um, and then on the right, that's the Parks and Rec homepage, just like the police page or, um, human resources, no matter what homepage you go to, that is what it's gonna look like on the entire website. Um, and that way people know what to expect when they're going on our website. Um, that is the entirety of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
Well, very good. Thank you. I was just looking up the municipal code. It looks like it's a little easier search functionality. Did you do anything to that or is, is that the way it's been? Cause the municipal code for some reason has always been a little bit of a challenge to find your way through.
Correct. That's actually done through Code Publishing, which is a third party. And I know they've been making updates to their platform. So, um, that's not anything that we've had any um, association with. That would be whatever they're doing.
It, it looks cleaner though in the mobile app. So anyway, any questions of, Mr. Gibson? Thank you for your work. This is great. Mr. Anderson, did you have a question? Oh, Ms. Bell?
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. Um, I had a question about the city calendar. That looks like that's changed on the website. Is there a reason why it looks like an Excel document now?
That's her bit. Um, the, so I know previously when I was here, when we redesigned the website, um, the calendar, we had built in widgets that did like a scrolling with images. Um, and then it looks like now it's been replaced with a Google calendar.
Okay.
And that's, um, what that is. And so I don't know what the thought was.
Lines, it's just not.
It's not as visually appealing.
Yeah.
So that is something, um, you'll notice the homepage actually has been changed, um, recently, within the last few days. Uh, Derek and I whittled it down and made it a little bit more simpler and the calendar is still on the list of, um, items to be looked at to see if there's a way we can make it more visually appealing. So we'll be working on that.
That would be great. And then I had a question regarding other accessibility things. Um, are you doing alt text over some of the photos, anything like that? So not just language focus, but focus for other people who are looking for accessibility.
Correct. So every image should have an alt text and that's something that when we redesigned the website and we did our training and all the training that we provided staff, um, as well as all the written documentation, instructed people to do that. Um, unfortunately, what I've seen going back in is it looks like that hasn't been done. I know that when I'm uploading everything, I'm doing that as well as descriptions for PDFs. So all the accessibility things. So as we renew the trainings with staff, um, teach them on the new design, that will be things that'll be hammered home and a goal will be to go back in to those images that are there and try and slowly take away at adding the alt, the alt text so that it is accessible for, for that purpose.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your work and adding to my, uh, now I know about bounce rates and various things like that. So I learned something new tonight, actually, um, cause I try to avoid this stuff as best I can. Um, any surprises for you? I, I appreciate the, developing a consistent format and really trying to understand where people are going so that they can find those, because I run into that every day in my day job and at home and various things like, why can't I find this? And it's just not our website. So I, I, I do appreciate that. Are there any surprises and, and did you make any? First of all, are there any surprises that, that caught you where we weren't thinking that there wasn't as much activity maybe as there was, or that we were really having trouble with certain areas? You talked about the, the bounce rate in district court, for instance, clearly people are wanna know information. That's a stressful situation. So fir- first of all, I've got two questions that um, kind of where there were real prob- areas that we were really having problems that you think you or you hope you have fixed. And two, just specifically about my Lakewood 311, did you make any changes to that?
I'll have Bryn talk about 311. Um, I don't have anything to do with that personally. Um, as far as surprises, things that surprised me when doing the website, um, definitely the biggest problem throughout the entire website was that logical pa- like paths of travel. Um, we had something going on where there was a dichotomy between what city departments viewed themselves as on the website versus what residents will probably be looking for. For example, um, animal licensing under finance, although finance technically cares, takes care of animal licensing. Um, as a resident, I'm not gonna go to menu, departments, finance, animal licensing. Um, so a lot of things like that and finding the most logical places to put things, whether or not they actually belonged in that department, um, categorically, uh, rather than what they belonged in the eyes of the residents. Um, yeah. And then.
Sure. Um, to the my Lakewood 311, no, that's another one. That's a third-party app. So, um, our lim- we're limited in what we can do there. We certainly can work with the app developer. Um, and we have contact with them on support when maybe people have issues adding information or, or trying to put in a, a request. But we don't have any say over look or feel or anything like that. We don't have the freedom that we do with our website.
Okay. Thank you. Good job.
Uh, you do have a little bit of, quite a bit of flexibility with the Lakewood 311, one, one app. Cause you can go in and customize quite a bit with it. So just.
Correct. Yes. I'm sorry. I meant more like on the, like we can't go in and change the SEO or things like that. But yes, you're right. We can, we can customize how it looks to users when they click on it. So we can have our homepage at the top. I think we've prioritized council agendas so that when you go to the, the homepage, homepage of the app, it'll be there, um, for people to find. So yes, that's great. Yep.
Great. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate all the fine work, notwithstanding the fact you were a LUTE, not a ZAG, but that's okay. It's okay. It's all good. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I just wanted to extend our thanks to Derek as well because he really was, uh, wonderful at, at what he did and he, um, at times was kinda going without direction since we were without a communications manager for a little bit. Um, so he did a lot of really amazing work and was very quick at it as well. So.
It's great.
We were very appreciative of, of how quickly he worked and, um, his ability to problem solve when things weren't quite as easy to find.
Fantastic. Well, thank you again very much and thanks for hanging in there tonight. You got a chance to have some sort of real world experience in a council meeting. So good for you. Thanks. All right. Take care. Yes. Very good. Anything else, Mr. Caulfield? You wanna show us your prowess in navigating a new and improved website?
Um, certainly, Mayor. Um, but let me provide you some other updates if I could. Just got a couple of items here.
Very good.
Um, last, um, last Friday, the, um, library advisory committee, they held their third meeting. And myself, along with our Parks Recreation Community Service Director, Mary Dodsworth, and our senior center coordinator, um, Elizabeth Shide, were asked to attend and provide an update as far as why is the city um, involved in this, in this process. You know, in summary, we went, you know, really this dates back to 2010 when the library initiated a planning process to develop their master facilities plan in the city, as well as the Lakewood community as a whole was invited to participate in that. You know, the outcome of that as it relates to Lakewood, because it covers their whole service area, was, um, it identified the need for new libraries in Lakewood, both for the main library as well as the Tillicum branch. Um, subsequent to that, you know, this body here, um, actually incorporated that into, reflected that in our, in our city's comprehensive plan, the need for new libraries, as well as into the legacy plan as it relates to partnerships and the sharing of facilities. For example, the senior community center, something a- a- along those lines. You know, we pointed out that even though the city's not the decision makers or relates to libraries, as you know, that rests with their board of trustees. Um, you know, really there was three primary reasons why the city's involved. Again, you know, going back to 2010 and the planning process and the community involvement that existed. Um, the second is that, you know, the city views the opportunity to again, quote unquote, relocate and expand um, the main library in the Tillicum. Um, the main library in the Tillicum branch, as was recommended in 2010, is to create an economic catalyst. You know, both in our downtown area as well as in the Tillicum neighborhood, as well as perhaps including better access for library patrons. As it relates to transportation, um, and better parking. We know that that's a that's that's been an ongoing issue. Um, and third, um, and this was something that Ms. Dodsworth um uh really spent some time talking about. You know, is the opportunity to have some shared space, some shared facilities and perhaps a community or senior center could work under under one roof. And um we do think it's at the very least um worth evaluating and and pursuing. Um, we also talked about the city and the libraries partnership in 2017 where there was an MOU to look at. Various opportunities for different parcels of property, both in the Tillicum neighborhood as well as in the downtown. Unfortunately, a property did not rise to the top as it relates to the downtown area. However, in the Tillicum neighborhood, this body ultimately secured property on Union Avenue. That's actually it's a it's an acre and a quarter. Potentially for a new Tillicum um library, library branch. Um, and then, of course, you know, the city partnered with the library district as they um, you know, initiated their community engagement plan as it related to new libraries in 2019. And then as they began to move to the next steps in 2020, that unfortunately abruptly came to a stop because of the pandemic. But then we kicked it off again late last year and here we are now with the Lakewood Advisory Committee, again, back at the table trying to address that. So those are kind of some of the key highlights and topics that that we talked about. And again, Ms. Dodsworth. Um, went into a little bit more detail in terms of how a senior center and an activity center and things along those lines could potentially could potentially work. Uh, we understand that the Library Advisory Committee um has two more scheduled meetings, the first on October 4th. And then the second on October 26th. And I know that we're scheduled at this point in time for them to make a presentation to both this body. And the Board of Trustees as part of a special meeting. I think it's on November 17th, if my memory is serves me right there. So again, just wanted to keep you appraised of what's what's happening there. Um, I'd uh like to uh congratulate our um South Sound Military and Communities Partnership Team. Our uh program manager, Bill Adamson, and um our our coordinator, Maria Tobin, for their leadership as it relates to. Um, the development of the updated growth management plan, um, that was uh recently recently completed. And uh the team that put together all of that, um particularly our outside consulting team. Um, is going to be recognized at the State American Planning Association um meeting. I think it's uh sometime in October. Um, with um, you know, um o- honoring the work that they did. Um, as part of the comprehensive planning for large jurisdictions category. So just wanted to pass that on and offer our congratulations again to. Um, um, Colonel Adamson and and Ms. Tobin there. Um, also, uh, the student team from the University of Washington Evan Schools of Public Policy and Governance. Is also being recognized under the umbrella of the student uh category. And that's for their work in developing the city of Lakewood's climate change uh public perception study, which was presented to this body earlier this year. So again, we would like to extend our um uh grad- congratulations to those um students as 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 well. Um, as you know, we've been working with the Nisqually Indian Tribe as it relates to um a partnership to construct a series of improvements at Fort Stillcom Park. That will feature and celebrate um their unique culture and history um of the Nisqually tribe here in 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 Lakewood. And that's going very, very well. As a matter of fact, we have received a letter of support from the Nisqually Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, supporting the city and the Nisqually tribes um endeavor to secure some state capital budgets as part of the upcoming state legislative session. To make those improvements. Uh, the next steps is that. That recommendation now moves to the full tribal council. They're expected to meet later this week to um hopefully bless that. And then that recommendation will then come before this body as part of your next study session on the on September 26th. And then perhaps um if council so inclined, consider a resolution also supporting that. So again, uh, that's moving forward and that will be a key. That's being recommended as a key legislative priority for the upcoming session to be able to secure the monies to make those improvements in the beginning in 2023. And I really want to thank Ms. Dodsworth and her team for, again, their leadership and um spearheading and working collaboratively with the tribe. Um, want to recognize our police department, uh particularly our uh property and pro act team. Um, they conducted another retail theft. Emphasis at the Target right here in the town center this past Thursday. They worked um in partnership and collaboration with their internal security. Uh, personnel. And the result of that is they ended up um taking into custody um 12 individuals. Um, for a wide range of 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 theft activity. And again, the purpose there is to send a signal. If you want to do this type of stuff, don't come to Lakewood. In addition, there was a call out for um a theft in progress over at Lowe's, and so they responded to that one as well. But again, want to thank LPD and of course our business community for partnering wi- with us on this. And again, um, trying to be proactive to try and um knock down some of the nonsense that's occurring out there. Um, and then as it relates to your calendar, uh, there's one more um Famas Market, which is uh tomorrow. And uh it's from uh 2 to 6:30 over at um Fort Silicon Park. Um, also this Friday at 4:00 PM, uh, the catalog, the catapult um adventure park. Is going to have a blue ribbon cutting spearheaded by the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce. And you folks are all invited if you'd like to attend that. Again, 4:00 PM. Um, also Pierce College on September 28th, which is a week from this Wednesday. Is um having a ribbon cutting for their new glacier building. Grand opening, which is going to house their veterinary technology and dental hygiene uh programs over at their over at their campus. And by the way, this is um, this um development came about as part of their an update to their uh master facilities plan. Which I'd just like to point out, they moved very efficiently and effectively to get that in place. Not to say that other state agencies do, but I just want to call them out as it relates to their effectiveness and efficiencies. And not just getting the master facilities plan in place and done, but then moving forward with actually implementing it. And they were able to build this building within um like 12 to 14 months after that master facility plan was updated. Um, and then, um, of course, we have the dinner event with um with our community connector, the 22. Lancer Brigade on on September on September 30th. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Cofield? Mr. Branstadter?
Um, Mr. Mr. Cofield, um, did the events uh for the public. To provide some interviews about attributes for a new police chief to take place Saturday and earlier in the week? So it was uh how 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 was participation?
Yes, Councilmember Branstadter, there was one on uh last Tuesday and one this this past Saturday. And it was a total of um one person attended on Tuesday and three attended on Saturday. So.
All right. Thank you.
And again, the purpose of this was to seek some input in terms of identifying, you know, the types of qualities we want to see in the next police chief. So.
Any other questions, Mr. Cofield? I had a a brief one on the library. I think there was an email or whatever that came out about the uh interim. Building protection with the TARP, tarping situation, you know, wasn't real clear about. What happens after a 90-day period of tarping? It seems like there could be some. Other challenges with the building if that.
That that's correct, Mayor. So long story short, um, a TARP is not an approved cover. Is a roof under the international uh International Building Code. And um that's not something the city has any flexibility with. We're mandated to um. To um abide by that. And so um what they can do is they can come in and, you know, put on a TARP for 90 days. They have the ability to seek um an additional 90 days through our hearing examiner process. But after 180 days, if they so decide to do that, they need to then move forward with a building permit to structurally fix the roof. Um, one of the challenges that they're going to have is the value of the roof as it relates to the value of the building. Again, as uh called out in the International Building Code. Um, but that's something that they're in the process of pursuing and evaluating. And uh we should know in the near term uh what they what they plan on doing.
Got it. Okay. Very good. Well, thank you very much for the report. Now turn to council comments. Mr. Branstadter, how would you like to be first today? Ms. Farmer? Ms. Bell?
I just wanted to uh congratulate the staff for the event on Saturday, the Fiesta de mi fa- the uh the familia. I thought it was great. It was a lot of fun, a lot of dancing, great music, love the arts. Um, was able to speak with a couple of the artists too there and I bought a book of the poems. So it was a great event. So thank the staff for those four events that happened on Motor Avenue this summer.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anderson?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'd like to commend the library system for seeing a representative tonight, uh the fortitude to stay through the meeting. Uh, it's a welcome move toward transparency. Uh, however, I remain deeply disappointed in the library system um and its treatment of Lakewood. And I'd like, and as part of that transparency, to get some input from the library system about. Where the money goes and what's going to happen to the money that shouldn't be expended because of the. Lack of a library in Lakewood. Uh, Mr. Cofield mentioned 2010. I was here in 2010. There was quite a bit of discussion regarding the need for new libraries in Lakewood and Tillicum. Whenever we pushed the issue, we got inaction, silence, or we're not ready. Or we don't have our plan, or it's uh, we don't have the money. Well, if we look back to 2010, and we went 2017, we even had the formal partnership, I mean, five years ago. As Mr. Cofield indicated, we tied up some property, we bought some other property. At that time, the library system was unwilling to do either of those things on its own, saying it didn't have money. Since 2010, the library system's revenue has grown 49.3%. Consumer Price Index has gone up 31.7%. That differential this year is $5 million. So in today's dollars, we have $5 million more in the library system budget for the year than they had. Back in 2010. They have no debt. Uh, they have $110 million in council manic uh debt capacity. And $550 million in general obligation uh on debt capacity. So no debt, plenty of borrowing. Additional cash flow. And we're here 12 years later. And we get blindsided. And that's probably what hurts the most is that it was none of the collaboration that we would expect. When we have attempted to assist the library in moving forward for 12 years. Now. Lakewood represents about 10% population wise and roughly the same amount budget wise of the library system. Are all the people who were employed across the street in Tillicum going to be remain on the payroll? Using the money without providing the service? Are there going to be any cutbacks from the administration when you have 10% less? Of the population that you're serving? I I don't think so. It should be. That's what happens in business when you lose a major customer. You get a 10% across the board cut. I've heard nothing about anything to decide a reserve. Or to cut the expenditures. So there's extra money, there's no debt. And the likelihood that expenditures will be cut in an effort to set aside money to do what should have been done. Uh, close to a dozen years ago, which is build a new library in Lakewood. So I'll believe it when I see it. Uh, I do appreciate the transparency, at least you're talking to us. Uh, and uh going through a process. Second item I had, which more brief, uh. I would uh propose uh for future action that uh the council uh. Change its rules to revert to our pre-COVID rules when the governor's emergency mandates uh expire. And uh have public comment live only. Um, I don't think that. Former resident in. The Midwest or a junior high student who's been primed by some relative in California should be. Uh, coming in remotely and using up our time. It's not so bad if it's Wednesday, Tuesdays. But when people go out on a uh an issue and recruit people from all over. Who don't have, really don't have any connection to Lakewood uh to uh make remote comments. Uh, I think uh it's not valuable and it's. It it's, its value is very limited and it's, it it takes a lot of time and effort. Uh, and third, I'm, it this kind of relates to the recruitment of the police chief. The, uh, there's a great concern in my mind about something pretty very predictable that's happening. Uh, and it's the rise of vigilantism. Uh, and it comes from all quarters. Uh, you have, uh, you know, the Panthers bragging about going out in their uh armor and. Making the community safe. Uh, I don't feel any safer. Um, you have people chasing down car the car thieves. When uh somebody stole their car armed. Not an irrational response. It's very predictable. You stole my number one possession. And I have a gun. I'm going to go get it back. These are recipes, both recipes for disaster. Uh, so whether uh we can do something about keeping property crimes down. Through local effort, or more importantly, working through our legislature to correct. Very obvious errors in uh things that the legislature, the courts have done. For the safety of our community, which was brought up, very. Very simple physical safety. We have to make the people feel that they. Can rely on the police department. To help make them safe. They don't have to do it themselves. Uh, it's not the old west and it's a very dangerous trend. It's not just in Washington. It's happening all over the country. That's my rant for the night.
Very good. Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, uh Fiesta de familia was was great. Um, a lot of fun. Beautiful early, late summer, early fall evening. Um, and very well attended. So kudos to to our staff and everybody that put that on. Um. I want to, this is kind of an interesting aside. You know, I look at grants that are coming in for council approval to make the application. And a grant came its way today. It may not make it uh for council approval to even make the application. But the Parks Department has requested a FEMA grant of a fairly large amount to rebuild. The Lakewood Community Center. Um, and they're counting on. Two and it's like a $4 million request and it's a $2.5 million. They're anticipating another $2.5 million coming from the state of Washington. Um, it is an application to become an application. In other words, they send in a pre-application and. They'll find out whether or not it's um. You know, it's in the running or it's even eligible. And then at some point they can. Make an application. But I just thought that was interesting and it came really out of left field. Um, PCRC meeting, which I I think the the mayor could comment on, but I will say I I made it on the Transportation Coordinating Committee. Um, I'll be there with uh Councilmember Mello and uh. Councilmember uh Dave Morel from the Pierce County Council, Councilmember Heinz from the Tacoma, City of Tacoma. Councilmember Figueroa from University Place and Councilmember Whitting. Believe he's the Vice Mayor Whitting uh from Q Alab. So I don't have anything else to report on that. When we're going to meet. Um, I'm not sure. And uh, but our charge simply is to look at that that the formula. And how we go about making the decisions on the transportation thing. So uh more to report to you on that as things transpire.
The re-review of the criteria for scoring projects right now. Yep. That is very good. Deputy Mayor Moss?
I wouldn't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, briefly, uh, coming on the police department. We just need to, all of us and myself included, to to realize that we're never going to satisfy people. Everybody's going to have their opinion and they're going to say it. Everybody's going to have their opinion and they're going to say it. Comments that I heard was that police was called on a homeless person over by the Safeway Now by where Everston used to be. And the comment that I heard was, thank God, there was a, uh, Lakewood policeman called because nobody else is coming. So it's a mix of comments being made throughout, about our police departments and, and rightfully so, but still. Just have to take it in context, I think, more or less. On a more positive note, I did not make the event on Saturday night, um. I golf eighteen holes and. I say I'm twenty-eight, but it's a different story there, you know, but anyway, um, I wanted to also share that, uh, King Five. Showed the Hearthstone Heroes again, and they did it in a different context, and I missed it. But my president for the Rotary didn't, but, um, he got me. But they did a real good take on it, and I think they highlighted more the Lakewood multicultural coalition, which is a big supporter for us in the program. So just wanted to share that because I was pretty proud to be a part of it, thank you.
You should be very proud, it was a great, great story and about a great person and a great cause, so thank you. Just a couple of comments tonight, uh, want to thank the, uh, city manager on the retail emphasis. I think that's something that we have all been, uh, looking forward to and, uh, receiving the outcome and kind of the chronology of what happens. Through those initial eleven charges or at least arrests is really helpful and I appreciate that, so thank you. On, uh. Whatever day it was, I had Pierce Transit, it's been a blur, Pierce Transit Retreat, I think it was either Wednesday or Thursday after the Chamber fiftieth anniversary, which I did attend and helped inaugurate the. The new board members, and we discussed that tonight during the proclamation, but at the Pierce Transit Retreat. We talked, uh, a lot about, uh, what's going on with the transit agency, uh, including kind of reviewing, you know, policies and procedures, including the pending BRT two planning process. Which it appears from a scoring, uh, selection criteria at present, the BRT two option that's most favorable is one that comes to Lakewood. Uh, not necessarily through T C C, but directly through, I think the route was, uh, through the mall and then on into Lakewood. So more to follow on that, but Lakewood is going to be, be the recipient of some good transportation options as a result of that planning process. It's a ways down the road, as they say, but again, more to follow. Mr. Bokey mentioned the PCRC meeting, which was, uh, quite a meeting, it went until about eight thirty at night. And as part of the meeting, we had the opportunity to look at the contingency list of available funds that were. Coming to the Transportation Coordinating Committee for a rescoring to see which projects would bubble to the service. And there was about two million dollars, uh, that was available. Through that process, they made the recommendation that there would be about four or five, uh, awards, including Lakewood for six hundred and seventy-one thousand for the Hundred Street Southwest Project from Lakewood Avenue to South Tacoma Way. And I believe that is designed and right away. And, uh, there was a lot of gnashing of teeth because the alternate recommendation included a strict reference to the scoring criteria. But apparently according to Mr. Blount, who's the chair, that there was some internal discussion that resulted in the recommended list of projects of which Lakewood was one. And interestingly enough, the votes back and forth, it was a, a ten to ten tie with two votes in abstention. For not the recommended slate, but the unrecommended slate that didn't include Lakewood. So we got that voted down, uh, and then I immediately moved to adopt the recommended slate, which included the six hundred and seventy-one thousand for Lakewood, and that did pass. So, long story short is, uh, if you think you want to take a break for dinner after a long meeting, don't. Because you might miss a critical vote, and in this case, uh, Mr. Bokey and I. Were successfully able to, to steer six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in the right direction for the benefit of Lakewood residents, and I'm proud of that. So the Fiesta, uh, on Saturday was fantastic, I didn't get a chance to see all of it, I came toward the end and, and walked through and met a lot of the vendors. And they all seemed to have very, very positive things to say. Music I thought was fantastic, the art exhibits were great. So kudos again to our park staff for putting that on as well as all the, the many, many volunteers, so. It's been a busy week. And, uh, more to follow, unless there's anything else for the good of the order, Mr. Anderson?
Follow on, on your, the transportation funding, uh, discussion. Uh, the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Committee meets Thursday. There is an information item, which means it's staff driven, about a, an October twenty-first scheduled event. TOD, Transit Oriented Development for All, planning for one million new people near transit. There is also, uh, a article in the news here about a, a development at Twenty-Fifth and Pacific. Where they're putting in over two hundred apartments in Tacoma. With six parking spaces. We don't have the transit system to support transit oriented development at that level. And the funding source, as you know, for, for Pierce Transit is the sales tax, and Tacoma currently has the highest sales tax in the nation. And they're the core of the funding for Pierce Transit. So, um, I know that the, at the Pierce County Regional Council level, there are. Differing factions, some who want to spend all money on transit and others who want to distribute it more widely. Uh, it's just something, we have to attend those meetings. Try to slow down the flow of all money. Uh, slow down the planning process for all transit oriented development to some extent. Until we can make sure there's transit to service.
Very good. Mr. Branstadter, you have something?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask, since we're going to be hosting the, uh, two-two leadership, uh, next week, the, uh. Did you have a, uh, a, a contribution amount you were expecting from us?
Uh, I think yes, I, I may defer to the clerk on that, so where we are. Is we're trying to. Yes, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, we're working on that, we should know in the next week or so.
Got it, well, the next week. Hopefully it's not or so, because it's next week.
It's a, it's, um, September thirtieth.
Got it.
So it's a week from Friday.
Very good, yeah, it's the thirtieth. So it'll be in the range of fifty to a hundred likely, but the city manager will let us know. One final alibi on my side in response to Councilmember Anderson's comment about. Perhaps revisiting our council rules with regard to public comment, as we have heard, the governor's emergency orders are, uh, up as of October thirty-one. As I recall, much of the virtual components of the public comment period were as a result of accommodating. Uh, the needs during the COVID period during the emergency orders, so, uh, if this is something that we want to revisit for the reasons stated. I suggest we think about putting on a study session agenda in the future. Uh, because I don't think any of us have the opportunity during council comments to give a nod one way or the other, yet, we probably want to think about it. Is that something that I have consensus to direct the manager to put on a future study session agenda? It looks like we have consensus, I've got at least four yeses here that are saying, put it for consideration on the agenda. Absolutely. That give you the direction you need, Mr. Caulfield? Very good. All right, unless there's any further ado, we're adjourned.